Probably gonna do this thing here, maybe. I don't know.
Yeah, careless.
Well, let's keep.
Look at him.
That's Brittany Elda.
Huh?
That's Brittany Elda, the one who had to elect a water bill.
About a hundred dollars?
Yeah, I believe that's what it is anyway.
Yeah, the one in the line there.
Well, we got a few seconds, thirty seconds. We're on the count now.
Oh, baby.
You know, you can do it a different way, too.
Come here, love.
You don't have to write on it.
What?
You don't have to write on it. You can type on it.
Yeah, I type on mine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See? Say mine?
I don't have, how do you type?
Yes, you do. And then you touch wherever you wanna type.
And then like if I wanna put a lot of notes, I use this little thing and it will make a little like comment box and then I can click on it and it will save a comment. So if it's like something long that I'm typing in my notes.
I've seen you type.
Yeah. So if it's notes, I just.
We'll have to work on that.
Yeah.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock. I want to welcome you to the April 3rd, 2018 meeting of the Whitehall City Council for the purposes of considering such matters that may come before it. I'm gonna ask everyone to please rise for a moment of silence and remain standing for the pledge. If you have a hat on, please remove it. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yeah.
Bellman?
Here.
Coniston?
Here.
Tanner?
Here.
Morrison?
Here.
Bailey?
Here.
President.
Well, we have the March 20, 2018 agenda and regular minutes for approval this evening.
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to approve the March 20th minutes.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Connison and a second by Mr. Kanter for approval of the March 20, 2018 minutes. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Bellman? Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey? Yes.
The minutes have been approved. At this time, we'll have a special presentation by Carol Ventreska. I hope I said that right. Um, and she's gonna tell us, I'll let her tell us what it's all about.
Good evening and thank you to Councilmember Lori Elmore for the gracious invitation for me to join you this evening and also my thanks to Council President Graham, members of the city council, Mayor Maggard, and the elected officials of Whitehall for this opportunity to speak to you this evening. A special thanks to Steve Quinsel, who just walked away, I guess.
Pressed by she is.
Who is a new member of the Board of Trustees for Employment for Seniors and is an incredible representative of Whitehall and a supporter of our mission. I'm Carol Ventreska. I'm the Executive Director of Employment for Seniors, which is an independent nonprofit organization located here in Whitehall. Now, I've titled this presentation Employment for Seniors: Opportunities in Whitehall. Forgive my play on your tagline, but I wanted to talk about Whitehall has given Employment for Seniors incredible opportunities for which we are deeply grateful. Let me provide for you this evening some insight on our work and our partnership with the city, including an overview of the EFS programs and services, the value of maturity and experience in today's market, issues facing mature job seekers, Employment for Seniors events, including our 5K, and opportunities to and from the city of Whitehall. For the past forty-five years, Employment for Seniors has touched the lives of more than thirty-three thousand mature job seekers in central Ohio. We've posted twenty-two thousand jobs and eleven thousand individuals, clients, have reported that they have secured employment. We provide free employment assistance to central Ohio residents who are fifty years of age and older and also free job postings and services to central Ohio employers. We advocate for this highly talented applicant regardless of income level, educational background, or career aspiration. And we do this, we accomplish our mission with three part-time people and a team of the forty of the most incredible volunteers you've ever met. During 2017, we registered seven-hundred-and-eighty new clients, we posted over a thousand jobs, and supplied over five-thousand job referrals for positions that range from professional, managerial, financial, to the drivers, customer service, and clerical support positions. For the third consecutive year, over two-hundred-and-twenty-five of our clients reported that they found employment. And we provide career services such as job searches, career assistance, resume reviews, and referrals to other agencies. Each year, we touch the lives of thousands of mature job seekers. So you're probably ready to ask me now, why have you been so busy for forty-five years? Well, seniors often face insurmountable odds when they're trying to re-enter the workforce. The concept of retirement has needless to say changed over the last few years. They face decreasing retirement savings and increasing healthcare costs. Clients may not understand the job search process, what are resumes expected to look like today, and how do you do online applications. Seniors also do not have very active networks and they are certainly losing their self-confidence in that job search. But I'm here to tell you tonight that experience does matter, that it does, it is important that we understand the issues of our older adults who are looking for work. Mature job seekers have lower absenteeism, lower turnover, they make fewer mistakes and are more productive, and are great mentors to the younger employees of a corporation. They have transferable skills that can be used in new venues. They have the ability to learn new technologies and are already active in email, social media, using their phones or tablets. When an employer tells me that a mature job seeker can't use technology, I just simply say, "We baby boomers invented the internet. We can do technology. We do it differently, but we can do it." Mature job seekers are professionals and they're committed to their jobs and to their employers. And employers are realizing the importance of finding older workers who bring great value to their organizations. Our goal is to help mature job seekers become the best possible candidate they can be and to also support employers to find talented, experienced, and mature job seekers. So let me tell you a little bit about what happens, how can a mature job seeker utilize our services. They register during a short visit to Employment for Senior and then they gain access to the hundreds of opportunities on our job list. They can utilize our services and programs such as resume reviews, career workshops, computer assistance, and mock interviewing. They can participate in employer hiring events that we are holding right here in our office in Whitehall, as well as the Senior Career Expo. And they can use our podcast program and our website, which includes tips and resources for their job search. Central Ohio employers receive free and unlimited job postings on our system and those jobs are marketed to five-thousand active clients in our database. Employers can also receive free website postings if they themselves are holding an event and we will advertise it for them. There's a slight charge on some of our services for the employers, such as a recruiting table at the Senior Career Expo or doing a hiring event in our office. But other than that, our services are free to both those mature job seekers as well as to local employers. Our Legacy Awards Program is coming up in May. In 2015, the city of Whitehall received the Charles B. Jenkins Legacy Award. I had to put that picture in there. This award honors individuals and organizations that provide significant impact on the lives of seniors in central Ohio. And this year's program will be May 23rd at Fawcett Center. We are going to be giving the Julian Marcus Lifetime Achievement Award to Brett Johnson, who is with North American Broadcasting. Many of you have met Brett. He's been the former president of our board for many years. We are also going to honor the Age Friendly Columbus Initiative. Our next event will be August 23rd, and that's the Senior Career Expo. That will include employers from throughout central Ohio looking for talented, mature candidates. We have career workshops, computer, we have a computer lab and training sessions during the event, resume reviews, and we're gonna be doing a livestream podcasting program, which will feature the employers who are at our expo. Last year, our Career Expo included seventy-eight employers who were looking for mature job seekers. So yes, employers are looking for those who are experienced, skilled, and mature. We had nearly six-hundred participants join us that day. We had seventeen computer and career workshops and provided resume reviews for four hours during the, during the program. And our fun event of the year is our trick-or-treat 5K family fun event, which is, highlights our excellent partnership here with the city of Whitehall. So I hope you're going to join us on October 27th, where we will again take over John Bishop Park. The Little Monster Dash is a free event for children ten and under, and the vendors will have tables and treats or games. The Whitehall High School Band has already agreed to be with us, as well as the Nacho Band, which is a group of doctors from East Main Street, and they will again be entertaining. We're also going to have a balloonist, a magician, a face painter, and a lot of other kids' events. Most importantly, this partnership that includes the city council, the mayor's office, Whitehall Police, Parks and Rec, city services, the WCCA volunteers, and many more, so that we can have created a great family event. For those of you who did not join us last year, you missed out on a really good time. So be prepared to join us this year and have a great day. We are formatting the program to provide the city residents with a wonderful Saturday morning outing. But the 5K is a fundraiser for EFS, so we are constantly looking for new sponsors, partners, and supporters, and we appreciate all of the assistance that the city provides us. We thought you would enjoy seeing the band and some of the pictures, including our little monsters dashing. So less than two years ago, Employment for Seniors was on the verge of leaving Whitehall because of changes in our previous location. With the support of Mayor Maggard and her team, we secured new space that has greatly expanded our ability to serve clients and employers. During 2017, Employment for Seniors brought a thousand people into Whitehall, who may not have ever had an opportunity to visit your city. That includes our seven-hundred-and-eighty new clients who registered with us. We held six job search workshops. We did five individualized employer hiring events. Our current and former board members from Employment for Seniors have visited along with other local nonprofit agencies and many employers. Our spring open house included guests from throughout the region. We also had thirty podcast programs produced in our training room with guest speakers from around central Ohio, and that includes a podcast that we produced with, and our thanks to Joe Ryan, who's not here this evening, but who came and talked about Whitehall and its bright future and all of the economic development that has been occurring in the city. That was published on our website just this past March 19th. We also are working with the Whitehall Chamber of Commerce Executive Committee. They recently met in our training room to discuss services of Employment for Seniors and how we can provide benefits to their members, the Whitehall business community. Currently, Employment for Seniors has seven-hundred-and-forty-nine registered clients who reside in Whitehall. We also have forty-two Whitehall employers who have an active status in our database. But I want to give a special shout-out to our landlord. First Commonwealth Bank has just been wonderful in bringing us into the fold in their building. The Whitehall community is well-served by this organization and not just for the banking. They've provided space to three organizations, which all focus on the employment needs of vulnerable populations. So in your city, in just one building, we are serving thousands of individuals who need our help to reach employment stability, and that includes vantage aging, opportunities for Ohioans with disabilities, along with Employment for Seniors. Employment for Seniors will continue to create and implement new partnerships throughout Whitehall, and we greatly appreciate your continued support. In order to meet our mission, assisting talented, mature job seekers in central Ohio and support local employers in their hiring needs, this partnership and new partnerships are critical. So we thank you for your time, for the opportunity to present information about our programs and services, as well as the exciting partnership we have developed with the city of Whitehall. So thank you again for your time this evening, and I can take any questions. Did I talk too fast?
No, no questions, but a comment. Thank you, first of all, Carol, for coming and presenting to council the wealth of information that you presented. I know many people might think that Employer for Seniors find jobs, but they actually prepare people for jobs, so that was, it's something that they should know, and I think that's a good opportunity, and hopefully more people will take advantage of the programs that you have.
Thank you.
And also the other locate, you know, other buildings that are right next to it, that's like a triage of information right there. So thanks again for what you bring to Whitehall, for staying in Whitehall, and look forward to just pushing more people toward your way.
Wonderful, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
It's always great to see you, Carol.
Thank you very much, Mayor Maggard. It's always good to see all of you, and thank you all. If you have any questions, several of you here at the, that know how to find me, and we would be glad to help. Have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you. All right, so at this time, it's our first opportunity for poll public. Members of the audience are allowed to come forward and speak for up to three minutes. And if you choose to do that, you state your name and address when you come up. So if anyone would like to come up and speak before council, you're welcome to do so at One more time, if anyone would like to come up this evening and speak before council, this is your opportunity.
I'm sorry, I wrote out what I was gonna say, 'cause sometimes my thoughts don't get all together if I don't.
Name an address for the record, please.
My name is Cheryl Horn, 471 Doverwood Drive, Reynoldsburg, Ohio. I'm here in opposition to the purchase of Woodcliff. I am a property owner over there. My husband and I purchased a four-unit building in Woodcliff. It's 4902, 04, 06, and 08 on East Broad Street in January of 2017. This building had a fire in it in 4906, which is the center unit, in March of 2016, and the former owner did not repair it, so we bought it as-is. My husband has been in the construction field for forty-five years, building houses and doing fire rehab, so this was right up his alley, and he enjoys taking distressed properties and making them new again. We have a lot invested in new trusses, new roof, siding gutters, windows, doors, new electric service and wiring. We are currently about half-done with the interiors of 4902 and 4904 and have a tenant in 4908. She is a working, single mom with one young son. 4906 had a fire, so it'll take us a few more months to have that one completed, but hopefully by June. Ken, who is my husband, has replaced the original iron galvanized pipes with PEX plumbing to avoid any future drain issues. Needless to say, we have a lot of time invested, along with dollars, and I was aware that there was a court case with Thomas Olander and the Woodcliff Condominium Unit Owners Association, but I had no way of knowing that the status of that, nor that it could affect all the other unit owners in such a drastic way that we could lose our properties. In fact, in March of 2016, right after we purchased it, the receiver met with us to vote for board members, and it was very, he was very optimistic about transitioning it over to them, and so I was under the impression that things were being addressed and that the new board would be contacting the unit owners about whatever needed to be done to correct city violations, but this did not occur. So about half of the three-hundred-and-fourteen units are owned by two to three owners who may not have had Woodcliff's best interests at heart in the past. Being among the many new owners, I do not know the history of this litigation, but I do know that what I've experienced over the past fifteen months. Woodcliff Condominium Unit Owners Association is a glorified homeowners association at best. A little over half of the total unit owners, whether they be occupied or landlord tenants, do care about their properties and would, in my humble opinion, do their best to correct any and all violations, if given the opportunity, opportunity to do so directly. We want to provide much-needed affordable homes to a section of the population that is sorely in need of options, those who cannot pay upwards of eight, nine-hundred, up to a thousand or more a month to provide a roof over their heads. There's a large demographic of largely minority and people of color who quite possibly could be without accommodations if Whitehall chooses to go through with the removal of more residential housing. The communication between unit owners and the court-appointed receiver has been non-existent, because apparently it's not his job to let anyone know anything or direct anything to be done. The communication between the unit owners and the condo association has been non-existent because the supposed new board members installed a year ago are only advisory and they have no abilities to make decisions or changes. The only people that know anything about any of this are a couple who are involved with the court case and who are, who own numerous units, and it seems that they have their own personal interests foremost in their minds. Pointing us to our receiver, our condo association for informational, information is futile. The only time they want to contact, want contact from us is to get their monthly fees.
You have about thirty seconds to wrap up.
Eleven years of court battle with Thomas Olander and Woodcliff has been costly and a lot of people have lined their pockets instead of making repairs and addressing code violations which could have been corrected numerous times over with dollars spent. Currently, this court battle is being waged against one or two owners who will agree to the sale and who have the majority of unaddressed violations and who stand to walk away with the majority of the funds if a sale is to happen, while the other half of us who care about the property will lose our costs without any say whatsoever. Please, please understand that the few who own large numbers of the units and who are choosing not to care, take care of the issues the city has outlined will be rewarded while we will suffer. We want to clean up this area and we want those unit owners who are not taking responsibility to be held personally accountable for their own violations. We would like our voices heard and the opportunity to show the city that we are not here to fight the city, but to do what is necessary to get and keep this community clean and abide by all ordinances and statutes.
Wrap it up.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. You have three minutes, sir. Name and address for the record.
My name is Todd Stapleton. I live at 90 Woodcliff Drive. You know, I've lived out there now approximately five years. I know that we've had some ups and downs out there. I've seen drug dealers come and go. I've seen drug addicts come and go. I know for the last year, those drug addicts seem to have disappeared. I also know that some of the code violations that some of these owners have occurred have, have been dealt with, because I, you know, have helped them, you know, try to help get things together out there. You know, not only, you know, we will, this affect the whole community, but it affected me greatly. You know, I do have a criminal record, and you know, it's hard for guys like myself to find housing and landlords that's willing to rent to individuals with a criminal history. You know, we have elderly, we have elderly individuals out there. We have disabled individuals out there. You know, my wife, she is one of those disabled individuals, and you know, it's, it's hard for her to get in and out of other, other facilities and places like that, but she, with our, where we're at, she, she has no. You know, I mean, I, you know, I myself have spent numerous hours and hours and hours out there picking up the trash, helping to get the, get the trees and stuff, you know, cleaned up. I know that the bank took presidents down at the park. I know therefore they tore the majority of the playground out for the children. Therefore, I know where the old manor used to be. There's now two basketball courts sitting there, so the children actually have somewhere to play. I just asked it, you know, you taking consideration those of us that actually reside there?
Who else would like to come forward at this time? State your name and address for the record, please.
Holly Butler, 75 Midcliff Drive. We're, my family and I are new residents to the area, and we've had a great experience being there. This is kind of new information to us, and it's kind of worrisome for our kids and myself to think about not having a home anymore. My sister, who lives with us too, is also a felon, and it's been hard for her to find a place, and this was a place that welcomed her. And I know she's a good person. She follows what she's supposed to follow. If you would look up her name, and she's not caused any problems. We've been good residents, and I mean, we don't cause any issues. My kids love it there. They've made a lot of friends out there. They like to go out and play every day. So, and my kids have fit in well with the school, and we like the schools, and we're just, we're residents that don't want to have to leave, and we like where we're at. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Who else would like to come forward at this time? One more time, is there anyone else who would like to come forward at poll, for poll public at this time? All right, we'll move on to our standing committee reports, and we'll begin with Administration and Financial Management. Chairperson Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration and Financial Management did meet last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file, and we intend to meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30 in the back room here.
All right, thank you. Community and Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community and Elder Advocacy met Tuesday. We don't have any pending legislation. We will meet again next week in the back room at 6:30. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Community Standards and Enforcement, Chairperson Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community Standards and Enforcement met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We will meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30 in the back.
All right, thank you, sir. Economic Development, Chairperson Morrison.
Mr. President, Economic Development also met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file, and we will meet again next Tuesday after 6:30 in the back.
Thank you. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Chairperson Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met last Tuesday. There is no pending legislation. Our minutes are on file, and we will meet next Tuesday in the back.
Thank you. Public Safety, Chairperson Connison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety met last week. Our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again in the back next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
All right, thank you. Parks and Recreation, Chairperson Kanter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation also met last week. Our minutes are on file. We actually discussed all the new playground equipment going into the five parks. They should be up by June, so look for the results. We'll meet again next week in the back after 6:30.
All right, thank you. Those are all the standing committee reports we have this evening. Our next reports will be from our officials, and we'll begin with our mayor, Ms. Kim Maggard.
Good evening and welcome. First of all, I'd be remiss if I didn't say welcome to our new safety director, Van Gregg. It's his first time here with us, and as safety director, not the first time here, just a different seat, so thank you so much. I would like to ask council's favorable consideration of ordinances 32, 2018, and 35, 2018, as these pertain to the body cameras that our officers will be wearing. One is to enter into a contract for the purchase of body cameras. The other is to appropriate funds to secure the contract. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have our city attorney, Mr. Michael Bivens.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, thank you.
Members of council, thank you everyone for coming out this evening. From the city attorney's office, we would like to report that in the month of March, we prosecuted 277 cases in mayor's court, 92 cases in addition to that went down to Franklin County Municipal Court. As you know, I do make a differentiation between Whitehall residents and non-Whitehall residents and out of the 277 cases that were prosecuted in Whitehall Mayor's Court, only 20 of those were of a criminal nature committed by Whitehall residents, which is a downward trend, down to 7%. This time last year, I believe that number was 12%, but it was trending now at 7%. Out of the Franklin County Municipal Court cases, only 32 of those were Whitehall residents that took their case down to Franklin County Municipal Court. And then lastly, Mr. President, I would ask for favorable consideration on Resolution 19, 2018.
Thank you. Next we have our city auditor, Mr. Dan Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report tonight. I would like to, to remind everybody that you have 14 days left to pay your taxes. But I, I would just like to ask for a favorable consideration on.
Pay your taxes. I'm sure the previous information was very important to the auditor's department and we'll take that under consideration.
We're, we're very busy right now.
Next we'll hear from our Director of Development and Public Service, Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
All right. Well, so now we'll have our first report from our Director of Public Safety, Mr. Van Gregg.
Mr. President, I don't have an official report, but I would ask for favorable consideration of ordinance 32 and 35.
All righty, thank you, sir. Next we'll hear from our treasurer, Mr. Steve Quinzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, I have no official report tonight.
All right, thank you, sir. Well, the following officials' reports have been filed in the council, council office since our last meeting. We have the mayor's report to council for February 2018, the treasurer's investment report for February 2018, the treasurer's activity by fund report for February 2018, and the treasurer's fund reconciliation report for February 2018. Under Communications, Petitions and Claims, we have the minutes from the March 8, 2018 meeting of the Planning Commission. We also have the agenda for the April 5, 2018 meeting of the Planning Commission. We did receive notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of the application for transfer of ownership of the D5 liquor permit of MMK, APLLC, DBA, JJ, EZ's, EZ's, 3878 East Main Street and Patio to EZ's LTD, DBA, JJ EZ's, 3878 East Main Street, East Main Street and Patio. And we also received a favorable recommendation with conditions from the Whitehall Planning Commission on ordinance 2518. Those are all the communications, petitions and claims we have. We'll move on now to our public hearing for ordinance 25, 2018. It's amending the zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and is subsequently amended, changing the zoning on property from Apartment District Limited Commerce District and General Commerce District to planned Whitehall unit, unit development property owned by City of Whitehall. I'll open that public hearing at this time and for those who would like to come forward and speak in favor of ordinance 2518, now is your opportunity. Please state your name and address before addressing council.
You get it readout again.
Yeah.
I missed no zeros.
I did.
No.
Could you repeat those, Jim?
Yeah. 090000. 0000. 0000. 0000.
Wait for it, he gets it good.
I know, coming right up.
I see him, I see him. He made a heck of an umbrella coming in during that storm tonight, I want you to know. I was responding 000s to.
I think he did.
Thank you.
[inaudible]
Evening.
Evening.
My name is Drew Russell. I am with the Ed Group and am assisting in the land planning and landscape architecture of the project. With me tonight is Will Kirk with Hallmark Communities, the project's developer, Andrew Gardner behind me with Burton Bull working on the engineering, and Dean Wentz next to him with Dean Wentz Architects taking care of the architecture. We are here presenting our final development plan and asking for the rezoning of approximately 19 acres to a PUD. So we're going to go through the slides here and kind of talk to you about the final development plan, so feel free to stop us at any time with questions or comments. The majority of the site is the former Commons at Royal Landing Residential Development located along the south side of East Broad Street, just west of Hamilton Road. This includes the vacation of Eastway Court and portions of the Fairway Boulevard, Shoemaker Lane, Rights Way. Sorry, I'm trying to get to the next slide here.
What's the baby boomer down there, did it push that?
Hey.
I get her. I know you are. Confidence, my man, confidence.
Sorry about that. All right. Maybe. All right, current land uses are multifamily residential, commercial and vacant and undeveloped ground. So Norton Crossing is a dynamic new development helping to establish an impactful gateway into the city of Whitehall. Given the importance of Broad Street and Hamilton Road, we feel that Norton Crossing exudes many of the sustainable long-term development goals of these corridors by providing quality housing, successful businesses and active outdoor spaces to be shared with the surrounding community. Along the 900 feet of Broad Street, we are asking for three access points to establish the traditional street grid that extends back into the site. Situated on the site are four three-story residential buildings with the fourth-story tower along Broad Street on the corners acting as gateways into the development. There are a total of 360 units within the four buildings, including one and two-bedroom units. These buildings surround what we are calling the activities spine, which contains a 1.7 acre park, the community's 6,000 square foot clubhouse and fitness center, as well as a 5,500 square foot restaurant overlooking the outdoor pool and amenity area. The future development area along the southern edge of the Fairway Boulevard is intended to be a future office site and will abide by the PUD development text in regards to the site design and architecture. So you see it right there at the lowest portion, just south of Fairway Boulevard extension labeled future development. Parking is dispersed throughout the development along the private drives, allowing us to reduce the amount of undesirable expansive seeds of asphalt. It's intended that the majority of the residential parking will happen closer to the buildings and within the courtyards, opening up the central spine for restaurant and park parking. Since our last meeting with Planning Commission, there have been a couple revisions that we'd like to note. We have revised text and some revised plans. The, the two big changes were that the park space is now planned to be publicly owned and maintained so it can function exactly how the city would like. This required us to extend the Fairway Boulevard all the way up to the park. Before, we actually had it cut off south of the park, but now it is extended all the way up to provide utilities to the park. The other change to mention is that there, there are ongoing discussions right now about potentially expanding the fitness center within the clubhouse. We've highlighted a small area just to the west of the clubhouse that that would be, if the fitness center does expand, it would be within that area. So the road system, nothing changes, there's actually a small green lawn area that the fitness center would expand into. Do you want me to pass these out?
No, thanks, sir.
There is revised development text in there as well as the plans that had to be revised due to those changes.
A question on the public-owned park. You said, this is going to be 19 acres, so is a portion of this going to be city property?
Yes.
And how much of that is?
I believe it's about an acre and a half.
It's about like 1.6, 1.7 acres.
And so then the city will be maintaining this property as, as part of the park and rec?
Correct, correct. That, and that has been in conversations with our Parks Department on the, the benefit of whether it was a privately owned piece of property with a permanent access and use easement or owned and maintained by the city. In conversations with our Parks Department, ultimately came up with, for the long term, it made much more sense for it to be publicly owned so that we did not in the future get into a discussion about what type of uses could occur on the, in the public park.
And that was a concern I had with, with it being a private entity as far as a park goes and our park system having control of the activities, you know, if we get one agreement and then a few years later this property changes hands, then.
Right, and we, right, and we thought about that. We were going to solve that issue with a permanent, we were going to solve that issue with a permanent agreement, but again, changing the public right-of-way fairway all the way up to the public park and then making that a public-owned space eliminates any future concerns.
And we are talking about the horseshoe.
So, I mean, if I could, Drew, I mean, I'll just, if, in one of the diagrams that you all were given, Bob, will you flip to the next page? So that horseshoe, the inside, I'd say from, you know, kind of the curb sidewalk in, that is the publicly owned space. Back of curb. So that would be the, and it extends into that, what I'll call the shaded seating area and that activity lawn and the pavilion and that area.
So any of the pond area?
Zero of the pond area.
And that parking around there supports that park area mainly, so that wouldn't be an issue.
Correct. So all of the parking on the site, again, one of the things that we're working with the developer right now is on a, a permanent access easement on the entire site that would allow for people when they come to be able to park, whether it's along the park, and so that's what, that'll be obviously included in the final development plan.
Moving forward, we've put together some illustrative perspectives to just give kind of general character and scale of the development. So this is a view of the development looking from above Hamilton and Broad, looking back. You'll see the, the four U-shaped residential buildings, the park in the center and the clubhouse up along Broad. The left portion down Hamilton is going to be some sort of future development, is intended to likely be some sort of commercial development, but no users have been identified at this point. It would be a further, it would be a future portion of the, of the project. This is another view looking over Broad Street, a little bit closer to the park area over the clubhouse and restaurant.
So the expansion to the workout facility would be that center building on the right in the green space?
Exactly. Yeah. So it would kind of come up to that sidewalk there.
Cool.
And if I could, part of the reason that in the final exhibit that is, will be on file with council, part of the reason that we're showing that proposed now is that our zoning text for the PUD is very specific in what changes can be made to a plan once it's approved, and to err on the side of caution, we'd like to show a proposed plan, a proposed expansion so that it wouldn't be required to go back through a preliminary hearing with Planning Commission, a final hearing with Planning Commission, and then back through the council process to merely expand that fitness center. So that's why we're showing it in the final plan, because there is no restriction on it if you, if they were to, you know, not build that or, or reduce that, that square footage.
But that was not part of the Planning Commission presentation.
That is correct.
Will Kirk with Hallmark Communities, originally we had a fitness center which was exclusive just to the residents as part of our amenity package in our clubhouse, which is standard for our apartment complexes. In the meantime, since our Planning Commission meeting, we've been speaking with an owner of SNAP Fitness, which is a, would be a bigger fitness facility that would be open 24/7, have carnet access and be open in public as well. We thought that'd be the attractive thing to include in our sites along with our clubhouse and the dining facility restaurant that's going to be attached to the clubhouse as well. So we thought that'd be a nice addition and if it was possible to include it wherever we can.
Any ideas on fees for public access?
As I said, no, but to talk further with the SNAP Fitness.
So right now you've got the clubhouse at 114, what, what do you go to? What's the?
I believe we're, we need additional 4,000 square feet now. I'm not sure if that's going to fit on there, so I'd like the ME level. I gave one to Dean Lindberg text, my offices are 2463 East Main Street and X Street. The footprint addition to the building would be approximately 2,500 square feet.
But two levels?
We're incorporating part of the fitness center that already exists along with, and added portion to the building to get approximately 4,000 square feet of fitness area for SNAP Fitness.
Right, thanks. And so is that expanding, is that, that rendering there?
Shows the current 11,000 square foot clubhouse that we currently have and now the expansion.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask. So it, it would expand out to the right, is that, okay, so there just won't be quite as much, a larger grassy area there? Okay.
Moving forward, a, a final rendering here showing kind of that, that streetscape along Broad. It, it kind of takes us into our next slide, it's a, it's a section of Broad showing how everything sets up. We're proposing an eight-foot pedestrian walkway pulled back from the Broad Street curb. This large tree lawn gives the pedestrian a safer environment, will allow space for the future Broad-Hamilton intersection improvements without having to change any of that pedestrian walkway and, and behind. We are also showing buildings.
My offices are at 2463 East Main Street in Ashley. The footprint addition to the building would be approximately 2,500 square feet.
But two levels.
We're incorporating part of the fitness center that already exists along with an added portion to the building to get approximately 4,000 square feet of fitness area for SNAP Fitness.
Right. Thanks.
And so is that expanding... Is that... That rendering there...
Shows the current 11,000 square foot clubhouse that we currently have and now the expansion.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask. So it would expand out to the right? Is that... Okay, so there just won't be quite as much, a larger grassy area there? Okay.
Moving forward, a final rendering here showing kind of that streetscape along Broad. It kind of takes us into our next slide. It's a section of Broad showing how everything sets up. We're proposing an eight-foot pedestrian walkway pulled back from the Broad Street curb. This large tree lawn gives the pedestrian a safer environment, will allow space for the future Broad-Hamilton intersection improvements without having to change any of that pedestrian walkway and behind. We are also showing buildings pulled up closer to Broad Street to provide more of an urban and pedestrian-friendly environment. That gives you kind of a scale of what that's going to be. We've reduced the amount of parking in front of the building, and we're pulling that building up as far as we can, but still providing convenient parking for those residents. Similar to Broad, we're pulling up buildings up along Fairway Boulevard as well, as you see on this slide. Again, this creates a more pedestrian-friendly, walkable-scale environment with on-street And a section of the internal streets. The internal streets are ultimately parking areas, but act more like private drives with on-street parking, street trees, and a comfortable pedestrian scale. And the multiple intersections within the development are intended to slow down traffic, creating a more safe environment around the park area and those public areas. So rather than having, again, those big seeds of asphalt in the drive aisles that people fly down, we're trying to tighten everything up and get on-street parking, a lot of intersections to slow down traffic as much as possible.
Stop signs at all those intersections or what is the...
That hasn't been worked out yet. I don't know if that's a traffic thing, because those would be private.
Yeah, they're private drives. It's really preference.
Calming devices in there? Speed buck?
No, that's why there have so many streets.
Just a lot of T-intersections, so it would be forced to stop at that T-intersection.
We know that safety of residence is a key item for the development, so that intersection we're going to provide ample amount of stop signs to make sure that individuals aren't flying through and that the entire residence from letting their people to kids. So that is a priority for us. So these are a couple of our building elevations. Building elevations are a mix of masonry, board and batten siding, lap siding. We have some sample boards brought with us. I've got a little bit. This color palette is one that we have developed over the last few years and found that is one that is not trendy and will stay sharp with clean work for years to come. The material we've used have been used to break up a building into multiple different façades and not provide a washed-out look, you know, with one monolithic masonry, wood and batten, lap siding, whatever you have to call it. Dean is very experienced. He uses all three of the materials as we've been doing it for, you know, more than he listens to one. So this is something that we're very proud of, this look that we've had incorporated into our projects, and we think it would be a really clean product covering the area.
Is that real brick?
Yes.
It is real brick.
What's the board and batten material?
The wood and batten material would actually be fiber cement product. So it's a fiber cement panel and a fiber cement panel.
Already put. Already put.
And what's the brown frame on the...
This is the window color. It's dark bronze.
Nice.
Dark bronze on the windows. Small upgrade disturbed new in the projects, keeps a consistent look, and they last for a long time.
Thanks.
So these are just some different angles for the exterior. We also have one for the Broad Street elevation. So this is the Broad Street elevation. The tower element that Drew mentioned earlier, the left side of the screen where we have more crossing and arch, which is kind of the logo design of our project, which we've incorporated through our upcoming market rate projects that we do continental at Hallmark. So this is a project that we've developed over the years and mastered to not go out of style, but be attractive, stable, and ready to start. We also, as Drew mentioned, have mostly one bedrooms.
Eighty percent.
Eighty percent one bedrooms. Our furniture had two bedrooms. In the bottom right corner, we have our square footages that we anticipate using this day.
We're aiming from 600 square feet to 1,100 square feet. Here's a couple odd ones in there that are much larger that are kind of part of the tower portion of the building. Everyone, I think, for the children and private.
So this is the interior of our units. We've got some upgraded items that we feel give us a higher quality unit, but still affordable. We've got stainless steel appliances. We've got golden countertops. These light fixtures, the panel light fixtures are part of this kind of industrial look that we started incorporating in our projects. We've got luxury vinyl plank in the kitchen and bathrooms, and we've got carpet in the living room and bedrooms. We like to use carpets in the living rooms because of the sound quality. It helps dampen some of the sound between units. I've been on a lot of projects over the last few years and had a lot of complaints about the plank if you walk around the living room, neighbors there are going on stop, and that tight-knit community that you've got a lot of neighbors. So that, those are all the finishes. And then this is our clubhouse. Clubhouse is a mix of masonry, fiber cement, board and batten, and fiber cement panels, which is the beige. And this is the layout for our clubhouse, as we mentioned before. It's partially going to be a restaurant, 6,000 square feet, 5,500 square feet of restaurant and the rest for our clubhouse and leasing facility. Clubhouse and leasing facility will include a fitness facility, whether it is a private clubhouse or a SNAP Fitness, should be determined. We'll have a social room. We generally have a large TV, a... some type of game, whether it's pool or shuffleboard or something like. Couches and hangout areas. We also have some print stations, office for public use as well as our leasing space. These are some of the renderings that we've had for some upcoming projects, this being a new one. These are exactly what will be the clubhouse, but as an example, some of the finishes. We've got a very nice clubhouse we've been using. So we'll have tile in a lot of... in all the bathrooms, high-quality flooring along our coffee bars, and our social room, as well as unique furniture for each of the locations, specific to our design for that project, where we try to come in and put together an entire package, and they're very sharp. And it's an amenity for the entire community. So these are some renders from past projects we've done. Top right and left are our social room, as we did, as I mentioned. We do a TV wall, lounge area, somewhere to sit, as well as a pool table and shuffleboard. And that's a typical fitness facility we have, which includes treadmills, some free weight, universal weights, and then, you know, plank or electric portion of that. These are actual photos for our project in St. Louis. Our clubhouse again. We're trying to hear, we've got a social room, we've got a fitness facility, pool, games, an area for our residents to enjoy.
So overall, talking about landscaping, we're providing a balanced plant palette that you can often find in an urban environment, healthy trees and foundation plantings along the buildings and internal drives. Broad Street will get special treatment with street trees and hedge along the backside of the sidewalk to help screen some of the parking and liven up the streetscape a little bit. We are providing a combination of privacy fencing and trees along the southern perimeter to help screen our parking and traffic from the residential neighborhood, which extends to the south, and that treatment will extend up the west property line there until about the maintenance building that you see. And then, the park area has gone through some transformation here recently, talking with the city. Now that it's going to be city-owned, we want to give them a product that they want to program out of. So this shows kind of where it stands right now. We are incorporating a seating area along the top portion of the park where people can relax under shade trees and around a fountain. You see, potentially, there could be tents set up that people could back into. You could have a small farmer's market or a couple vendors that come in. Food trucks can pull into spaces around the perimeter of the park for different events. The park, the green lawn area, is large enough that if the city decided to do a small kickball activity there, they could do that. The big feature along the lawn area is that there's planned to be a shelter, kind of band shell-type structure, that there could be music events that the city would like to hold, some more imagery, just kind of supporting our idea and the programming that could happen within that park. And then, there are some retention ponds along the southern end. Our plan is to dress those up with some strategically placed limestone slabs, some plantings to in a fountain in the middle, to really make those a visual amenity for the community. So that concludes kind of our final development plan, and we'll be open to any other questions.
Mr. President, if I could, and I have to apologize, I have to excuse myself, I have a family matter to attend to, but I do know that council, I believe, received the staff memo from Council Clerk from Joe Ryan. The Development Department worked with Hallmark and Continental and Edge and Burden Bowl for well over a year, working this plan to make it what you see today, but also making sure that we kept it economically feasible. And we are... I can only speak for the Development Department myself, that we are very excited for this project to get underway. Obviously, now that all the buildings have been cleared and final grading for demo is being completed, we're very excited for what this project has transformed into as the development site itself grew, from the original proposed 19 acres to incorporating the additional parcels on Hamilton. So I just wanted to state that for the record and thank Drew and Will and their entire team for their work on this project. Thank you.
Zach, I have a question on that staff report. On the last page, traffic access, it says right-in, right-out only, and this is under the condition that the bowling alley...
Correct.
Do we have an answer to that situation?
So, I mean, what I can tell you is I've spoken to the bowling... the bony... the bowling... boning. The bowling owner property, and they have expressed full commitment to not only the tenant holiday lanes, but actually the property owner in providing the full access to the site. So we do believe that the other right-ins, right-outs will be able to be accomplished on Broad.
And if that falls through, do we have an alternative plan?
The alternative plan is that the ones furthest to the west would end up being full access. That would be the backup plan, but I have no reason to believe that the full access won't be developed.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council?
Yeah, what exactly are the purpose of the ponds other than aesthetics?
Detention? Andrew with... Yes, Andrew Gardner with Burden Bowl Engineering. My offices are at 3,500 Snapper Road in Columbus, Ohio. We're required, per City of White Wall requirements, as well as Ohio EPA requirements, to provide stormwater management for this site. Even though there is a significant amount of development that exists on the site now, we are still increasing the purview area, and as a result, we're required to provide stormwater management to current standards, also water quality, things like that. And to obtain that, we need to have the detention areas. I think the rain we all saw a few hours ago is a prime example of why we need that storage.
You say there's detention? I'm sorry, Bob.
So am I correct in... Of course, we're looking at, you know, examples, but those areas that you've designated for that, will they always hold water? They'll always be wet?
It's the intention that they will be a wet pond with some freeboard storage that will flush away, flush away any rain.
Okay, so it won't be like what we see around the schools when they dry out and it's mud?
No, we do not want a muddy hole with cattails and things like that.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sure you've calculated X amount of inches over a number of hours and...
I have and still working on the fine details, but I do have some rough numbers. We need about 140,000 cubic feet of storage for this site, so...
So it's parking lots and rooftops?
Correct.
Okay.
Will those drain into the ponds?
So we'll design a storm sewer system for the site that will ultimately drain to the ponds, and then the ponds will have a control outlet into what is a 36-inch storm sewer in Hamilton.
So they essentially allow that system to catch up with the torrential downpour?
Correct.
Without flooding the sewer system first?
You know, I'm sorry.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
I always... I always want... You know, you see these things everywhere. And so I always wonder why nobody makes rain gardens out of it. Is there a reason for that? Because then you do have... You don't have to look at some dried-up ground or some... just some plain old ground around the edges of the pond. It would also hide some of the pond. I mean, and I'm not saying you have to do that on this, I certainly don't have the authority to do that, but I'm curious as to why, in this day and age, when all you hear about are, you know, the City of Columbus puts in rain gardens up around Hoover Dam, they put in lots of them, and it was all about water quality, yada, yada, yada. I'm curious as to why that the same approach isn't taken on situations like this.
Honestly, it's sheer volume. Rain gardens really lend themselves to a lot smaller projects, sites that are under five acres. There are EPA regulations in place that state when we have a site over five acres, we have to do a different calculation for water quality, hold that volume for a certain amount of time, draw it down over a slower period. So when we break that five-acre threshold, the rain gardens and things, we just can't make them work. And we have a lot of requirements that the EPA mandates.
Okay. I was just curious. So then I have another question regarding the area around the ponds, and I do have a tree list. However, I didn't really pay attention to it at the time because I didn't realize the ponds were going to be there, but what types of trees are going to be planted, let's say, between the pond and the existing housing that is there?
Well, trees that are going to take on the water. London plains and white oaks, things that are used to really wet soils.
Are you trying to influence us by using white oaks? Because of white oak?
No, it just so happens that those are the ones that work best with...
Well, and I would have a problem with it, but I just... Yeah, because there are trees that will suck up that water. Certainly not maples. We don't want any of those as we can get by without them, except maybe some hard ones. But there are many trees that you can plant that aren't invasive like some of the other trees can be. Okay, I'm just curious.
Behind the detention ponds, buttoned up next to the property, properties over there in Norton Field, you're going to have a six-foot privacy, is that correct?
Correct. A combination of a six-foot privacy with the... all those plantings that you see there to soften up that fence.
Is that vinyl or is that...
Vinyl, yeah.
Vinyl fence? Approximately how far is that pond from the backyard of one of the residents? Do you know by chance?
As it's drawn, I believe it fluctuates between about eight and 10 feet, but I'm still playing with that shape to try to minimize that and give me as much buffer as possible. And that all factors into, you know, final detention calculations and things as we do a detailed grading plan and some engineering on the site.
So we're guarding against possibility of overflow and flooding into those...
Yes, these will be designed... With the grading plan, we'll design in major flood routing paths that will ultimately go down Fairway Boulevard and out to the streets as opposed to, you know, impacting adjacent properties.
Okay, great. Thanks. Okay, great. Thanks.
An average, how deep are the retention ponds?
Typically, we would build these things to be about eight feet deep, and that's to get proper oxygen turnover, so you don't get the algae and things developing. I did talk in the planning commission meeting about making them six feet deep. We are adding the fountains and the ponds, which will help that oxygen turnover, so we're probably looking at more of a six-deep, six-foot-deep pond in this instance. They will have a safety shelf as well, about two feet below the water level, so it won't just fall in.
And then backing up for the safe, or the SNAP fitness, is that the same one that's like in Bexley, New Albany, those?
Yes.
And then, we are just, the park is just going to be run by the city, we're not going to be needing to maintain any of the parking spaces that are up against the park, or anything?
Curbs.
Okay. No, I just...
Snow removal, things like that?
Just Fairway Boulevard.
Fairway Boulevard that goes through there, because that's the public road, so we will have to take care of that.
Okay.
What other questions might you have?
I'm worried about the mosquitoes with the detention pods buttoned up against our mind.
You can treat it.
Yeah, there's ways to treat that, you know. Otherwise, I'm not really sure how to answer.
Yeah.
How do you control the geese population?
Don't get me wrong, I'm totally for this project, I think it's phenomenal, but I mean...
Every solution we come up with has its drawbacks and its process, so. I think the management company is experienced in that, too, that they'll have the answers for the geese and know how to take care of that.
But I agree with you on that, but there again, I look long-term, if the property changes hands and you just have different issues with different owners. There's a cover in your, I'm not sure if it's in the park area or whatever, that they showed on Exhibit A. What? I see the sizes, but there's nothing on this diagram that shows me how to be anchored, or the roof load rating, or the wind strength tolerance.
Structural details yet to be designed. It was something to work with Zach on, getting the really good look and feel for whatever the park needed, thinking of possible live user area. We wanted to make sure we had the space that you guys needed, as well as the power requirements over there and shelter. And we're also looking to raise the pavilion up about eight inches, have a concrete kind of curb to it, so it'll be separated from the, or elevated slightly from the rest of the park. But we've not gotten to the load yet, that's for the structure that will be designed, and once we get the full document, our construction documents, that will be provided by our project engineer.
Okay, I was just interested, because it does give particular manufacturer and whatnot, so...
That's what one that was suggesting to us, but that's all the detail we got into at the moment.
What other questions? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else you would like to say?
No, well, just that we appreciate Zach and Joe and the entire team, like all of the assistance that they've given us, as well as the input and help in the last year in the site development. And we look forward to the opportunity to be in the area, and it'd be a great project.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak in favor of Ordinance 25-2018? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to Ordinance 25-2018? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to Ordinance 25-2018? All right, I will close the public hearing on Ordinance 25-2018, and I'm going to ask Ms. Frymark, do please call the roll on whether each member of council was given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting and including any add-on legislation?
Can I read this?
Yes.
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 All right, we'll begin our ordinances and resolutions for the evening. We will start with third readings, and first up is Ordinance 24-2018. It's amending 745, titled "Vendors and Solicitors."
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 24-2018 and move for its adoption.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Ms. Connison for introduction and adoption of Ordinance 24-2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Beck? Yes.
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance 24-2018 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 25-2018. It's amending the zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 Codified Ordinances of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, changing the zoning on property located from Apartment District, Limited Commerce District, and General Commerce District to planned unit development property owned by the City of Whitehall.
Mr. President, I would like to introduce Ordinance 25-2018 and move to amend it to include pursuant to attached Exhibit A in Section 2.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Bailey for introduction and amendment of Ordinance 25-2018 pursuant to attach Exhibit A in Section 2. Questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. President. I am curious as to the changes on this, and it has not been seen by the Planning Commission. I think they're pretty significant that this should be tabled and sent back to the Planning Commission for a look.
You mean the Exhibit A?
We discussed those last week.
No, not Exhibit A. The city owning a piece of this property and the expansion of the buildings and locations. I would think that's something the Planning Commission should look at.
Well, I currently have a motion on the floor, and if you would like to make that a motion after the amendment, you can do so. But we do have, we currently have a motion, we will act upon that. First, any other questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Morrison?
No.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance 25-2018 has been amended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
When do I make the motion?
Now.
Right now.
Second.
Okay. Mr. President, I would make a motion to table...
He already made your motion.
Pardon?
He's already made a motion to adopt.
Yeah.
And you seconded it.
It's been seconded.
Will you withdraw your second? That's just what I have to do.
No.
Okay. All right. All right, so I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez, a second by Mr. Bailey for adoption of ordinance as amended. Ordinance 25-2018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Morrison?
No.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance 25-2018 has been adopted. Next up, we have Resolution 15-2018. It's a resolution to adopt a comprehensive development plan that describes the public need for the property known as the Woodcliff condominiums, and affirming the public need for the property as nuisance abatement, and authorizing the mayor on behalf of city council to make an offer to purchase 317 parcels from the Woodcliff condominium unit owners association.
Mr. President, wish to introduce Resolution 15-2018 and move to table until 4/17/18.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Morrison, a second by Mr. Bailey, to table Ordinance 15-2018 and to, until the 4/17/2018 meeting. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey? Yes.
Resolution 15-2018 has been tabled. It's the last of the third readings we have this evening. We will start with our second readings. We begin with Ordinance 26-2018. It's making a supplemental appropriation of $44,601.90 from the Tax Increment Financing Fund to various expense accounts in the 279 Fund, and authorizing the distribution of the portion of the total service payments attributable to each TIF to the affected vocational school district from the Tax Increment Financing Fund in the amount equal to 100% of the property tax payment the vocational school district would have received of $44,601.90, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 26-2018 and move for a suspension of the rules. Second.
The motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance 26-2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey? Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance 26-2018.
Move to adopt. Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of Ordinance 26-2018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance 26-2018 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 28-2018. It's amending the zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 Codified Ordinances of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under 1123.10C36 to allow Lighthouse Behavioral Health to operate a medical facility that includes inpatient care services on properly located at 4000 East Main Street, parcel number 0900005290, owned by Ohio Nurses Association. That's being read by title only. It has already been referred to the Planning Commission for their 4/5/18 meeting, and we will have a public hearing on this ordinance on 4/18/2018.
17.
What did I say?
18.
I did say 18, didn't I?
It's on 17.
It's 4/17/18.
4/17.
That's what I said.
It's a 4/18/18.
Okay, you guys, you're getting me on technicalities.
Trust me, I'm a doctor.
All right. All right, so that brings us to Ordinance 29-2018. It's authorizing the creation of the Flexible Spending Fund, appropriating $141,000 from unappropriated monies in the Flexible Spending Fund to various accounts in the Flexible Spending Fund, and declaring an emergency. That's being read by title only. That was the last item we have under second reading. Under first reading, we start with Ordinance 30-2018. It's approving and making a supplemental appropriation of $180,240.42 from the Etna Road OPWC Issue II Fund to the Etna Road Improvement Loan Account, and declaring an emergency. That's being read by title only. Next, we have Ordinance 31-2018. It's approving and making a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $3,164.28 from unappropriated monies in the Wim Pity Fund to various accounts in the Wim Pity Fund, and declaring an emergency. That's being read by title only. Next, we have Ordinance 32-2018. It's authorizing a supplemental appropriation from the 241 Law Enforcement Trust Fund to the Law Enforcement Trust account in the amount of $225,000, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 32-2018 and move for a suspension of rules.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Connison for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance 32-2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance 32-2018.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Ms. Connison for adoption of Ordinance 32-2018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance 32-2018 has been adopted. Next up, we have Ordinance 33-2018. It's approving and making an appropriation transfer, transfer of $424,630.52 from the Etna Road Improvement Grant to the Etna Road Improvement Loan Account, and declaring an emergency. That's being read by title only. Next is Ordinance 34-2018. It's an ordinance vacating four acres, more or less, of Fairway Boulevard and Eastway Court as a public roads in the City of Whitehall, County of Franklin, State of Ohio.
Mr. President, wish to introduce Ordinance 34-2018 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Morrison, a second by Ms. Elmore for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance 34-2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance 34-2018.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Ms. Elmore for adoption of Ordinance 34-2018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance 34-2018 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 35-2018. It's authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with watch guard in the amount of $216,142.50 for the purpose of purchasing body cameras for use in the Whitehall Department of Police, and authorizing payment from the Law Enforcement Trust expense account, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance number 35-2018 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
The motion by Ms. Connison, a second by Mr. Cantor for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance 35-2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance 35-2018.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Connison, second by Mr. Cantor for adoption of Ordinance 35-2018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. Ordinance 35-2018 has been adopted. That's our last ordinance for the evening. We have a resolution, which is Resolution 20, is 18-2018. It's resolving to approve, then announce certificates, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 18-2018. Move for suspension of the rules. Second.
The motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution 18-2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. The rules have been suspended on Resolution 18-2018.
Move to adopt. Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of Resolution 18-2018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
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 Resolution 18-2018 has been adopted. Next, we have Resolution 19-2018. It's authorizing the Walter Drain Company to correct an error in the codified ordinances and charter of the City of Whitehall and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 19-2018, move for the suspension of the rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Cantor and a, uh, a, a motion by Mr. Cantor, a second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of, uh, introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution 19-2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Yes.
Beck? Yes.
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution 19-2018.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cantor, second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of Resolution 19-2018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution 19-2018 has been adopted. It's the last item of legislation we have this evening. It's our second opportunity for poll public. If anyone would like to come forward, you may do so at this time, you will have up to three minutes. Time's up. We're gonna move on to community day. Well, I didn't see any movement out of anyone. Community date board, who has something for community date board?
This Saturday, I'm sorry, I interrupted. This Saturday at 1:00 at Whitehall Community Park, they're doing painting in the park again, very popular. They register for $5.
It's not $5 per person or per family? Yeah.
Soccer dad starts Saturday. She makes your debut. Goal, Elizabeth, my baby, yeah, I won't beat her, I'll beat soccer. Thanks.
It's supposed to rain.
Yeah.
Uh, who else has something for community date?
Maybe we'll come by then.
October 27th is the 5K. October.
And also the Halloween walk. July 3rd is fireworks.
Right, right.
She said that we all had to have something, so. He said we all had to have something.
It's got the Easter eggs, right?
And we have a meeting tonight.
Yeah.
All right, who else has something? All right, that's done with that. Now we move on to, um, poll council.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, I'll go first.
All right. I'll, I can live with that.
All right.
Yeah, I am, I'm sorry. Well, um, good to see everyone out here that, uh, stuck out, uh, stuck with us and all. Great presentation on, uh, on our new project coming up. That's a great team up there, we've got, you know, Edge Group, Eddie Georges, great guy, was able to meet him one time on, on a project, and really, really wonderful, uh, group there. Uh, Hallmark Communities, Burton Bowl, and Dean Watts, been working with him since, uh, 1994. So, yeah, he's, he's been doing it for a while, he knows what he's doing, did a great job. Dr. Van Tresk's, uh, presentation was great, uh, welcome Director Gregg. And I don't know if, uh, who heard me or not, um, back there, but this Saturday I'll be, uh, in DC on another honor flight. It's gonna be a little, uh, bittersweet because the last one I did was with my father and, uh, it's gonna be tough, but, uh, in his memory. That's all I have, Mr. President, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first, it's always good to, to be here. Also, I'd like to congratulate, uh, Van Gregg, Safety Director, thank you, congratulations to you. I know you're gonna do a great job. And, uh, we need more presentations to inform the public, like the one for, um, employment for seniors. And I think that was good information that they were given. And I'd also like to hear the, the stats and everything from the city attorney and how well we're doing and our, our numbers coming down as far as crime and what happens in Whitehall. And also, um, am pretty excited about the, um, uh, body cameras, but also wanna talk some more about some other opportunities with that as well, so, um, thank everybody for coming, and thank you again, Mr. President, that's it.
Ms. Connison?
I would just like to thank everybody for coming. Be very careful out there, it sounds.
Don't drown.
Sounds like drowning, exactly.
All right, Mr. Cantor?
Thank you, Mr. President, um, yeah, kudos, what everybody said, good presentation from Norton Crossing, um, senior employment. Ms. Van Tresk, she always does a good job. Body cameras, I've talked to a lot of people, talked to the FOP. It is what it is, and, you know, we don't have a problem in Whitehall, and I'm thankful for that. So we move forward, we go forward, and that's it, that's all I got.
All right, Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President, um, the presentations were great tonight, uh, they're very informative. Um, thank you for everybody for sticking it out, it sounds like the rain is calming down, so hopefully we will adjourn soon, so everybody can get out.
All right, Mr. Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to thank everyone for coming. And I would like for everyone to know that I am for the Norton Crossing development. Everyone here knows that I've had some issues in the last week or so, I went through those. Uh, but with these last minute changes, I felt they were significant enough, they should've went back to the planning commission and go through that process and give everyone ample time to look at over and see how that was gonna work out. If it was not for that, I would've been happy to have voted for it, but I felt strongly that should've been to the planning commission. And that's the way our process works.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, everyone, for coming.
Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you all for coming, and hopefully it quits raining when we get out of here. Wanna echo what everybody shared, and Larry, I, I couldn't agree with you more. I, I do think that, um, planning commission is a body of folks that we trust and respect in their decision. However, I just came to the conclusion that after I reviewed the changes and especially the, uh, you know, having control over that public areas of, in our park system, I felt that that was a little more important at the time than to, uh, rescind my second and run the risk of tabling and extending another at least two weeks. But I agree with you, and I apologize if, if.
I'm not offended, I understand, I, I just felt that that process was important enough to revisit. Everybody, that's why, we got seven people up here, we all have different views, different backgrounds, different experiences, and that's why we're here, is to represent what we feel best represents the public.